Thank you for being here and thank you for joining us either in person or via video. We did the bulk of our work this morning, I mean this evening beforehand with school improvement program plans and customized pathways, pathways, so that was, took us a little bit over. The first thing we do is approve the consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
One second. Is there comments or questions or something that needs further discussion? No? Excellent, thank you. Missy, will we take the vote?
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cattrall?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Becker?
Aye.
Mrs. Tuber?
Aye.
Which is passing 6-0.
So we'll begin with the report of the superintendent, if I'm not jumping ahead, but you'll notice now on the board docs, we actually have it as an attachment and that makes it easier to search. So any topics that we have come up in the superintendent report, we can access with the search function on board docs. I'm starting to get nervous as we're rolling, this is my last year, and I'm thinking, oh my goodness, what is it that I need to make sure that everybody else knows that I've now learned and known for so long that it seems second nature? So if I started going back to the beginning, forgive me, or make sure you're asking questions because years go by pretty quick, quickly. All right. Superintendent Qualman?
Thank you, Madam President. So we are three weeks away from our last meeting, normally it's two, but we did have fall break in there, so we pushed this meeting back a week and I'm pleased to report I did take a little vacation over that time, so that was good to get out of town, relax with my kids, get re-energized for the remainder of the winter here, so. Also pleased to report that last Monday, we opened the Edwards Early Learning Center, so congratulations to Sandy Muchler and the Facilities Department and all their crew in getting us eight new preschool and infant toddler rooms and all the requisite tiny facilities that come along with that. So that took a lot of work, but we're pleased to have those new facilities up and running. Also wanted to share that the RISE grant application has been submitted to CDE. We were seeking $1.3 million to use for extension of our MTSS program. We'll find out by November 6th is when announcements come out, which is very exciting, so we should know by the next meeting whether or not Eagle County has, has won any of those dollars from the RISE grant. We do have positive news to report on the Concurrent Enrollment Expansion Grant. Katie Jarno and her team, in cooperation with Colorado Mountain College, received $50,000 to use towards ensuring that we get more students to enroll in current enrollment classes and that our students experience more success when they're in there. So we're looking at expansion of that program and improvement in the success rate of kids who are in it. So Dr. Jarno, congratulations to you and your team for success on that grant. Up next, I've been able to help out in some schools, as everybody is well aware, we've been short substitutes, so I've taken the call at Edwards Elementary School, also was at GES, Gypsum Elementary recently, and Gypsum Creek Middle School. So whenever we're, we're tight on providing supervision or instruction, I'll try to be in schools to help out as much as I can. Also wanted to point out that I took calls last week from Joyce Rankin and Kay Ferry. Joyce Rankin is a state Board of Education member and Kay Ferry is a, is a local Republican Party leader here in Eagle County. They were calling me because there had been some concerns about teachers and students who were advocating their political beliefs in the classroom. So I did quite a bit of research to try to track down where this problem existed and it turns out it was in schools in Eagle County, but not in Eagle County schools, if that makes sense. So the incident was not occurring in, in any of our schools. But I did want to address this because I think it's important to, to know that we did have a political rally in the high school parking lot down here in Gypsum over the weekend, and I think it's important for folks to know that that happened without knowledge or approval of the high school staff. And that we're willing to work with groups who want to access our school facilities, but we ask that they go through appropriate channels and appropriate protocols so that we, we understand who's coming and, and for how long and for what purpose. And I think everybody is well aware that we are in the middle of an election cycle and mercifully that will come to a close next Tuesday. I don't know that we'll have all the decisions finalized at that point, but in an election season, it's not uncommon for political action to occur in our schools. So I think it's important to remind board members and to remind the public that students are permitted to express their support for candidates and their political beliefs, as long as their expression and communication is not offensive or disruptive to the learning environment. And this goes back to Supreme Court case, Tinker versus Des Moines, if anybody wants to pull out their civics books, I'm happy to nerd out with you on that. Staff, however, have an obligation to provide instruction that's objective and balanced. I spent many years in the classroom as a civics and government teacher and if I could finish the year without my students knowing my political beliefs, I thought it was a successful year. And it doesn't, doesn't mean that we don't cover controversial topics. I think we have an obligation to cover those in school, but we have an obligation to cover those in a balanced way. If you're going to invite one speaker in who supports something, you better invite the speaker in who opposes that same thing so that kids can hear both sides of the story. Our staff are welcome and encouraged to advocate for their own political beliefs, but outside of the work time and not with Eagle County School District resources. When they're in school, they're reminded not to advocate for their political beliefs. So even though the impetus for that was the call from Joyce Rankin and Kay Ferry, and it turns out the incidents were not happening in our schools, I think it's important that we still discuss that in a, in an election year. I wanted to mention again the McGuffey Award that our board president received, since, we mentioned it at the last board meeting, but since then, we have received an official certificate of excellence. There you go. We received an official McGuffey Award pin from CASB. And then on our behalf, we got some flowers for you to celebrate your honor. So we appreciate the commitment to the district and honor your dedication to students and staff with all the time that you've put into, to being a board member. You're an outstanding leader of this board and we hope that in the next year with your expertise, you can continue to train, train everybody up so that we can continue with your, your passion and dedication.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it and we will be focusing on training for the whole next year.
And lastly, to report to the public, since our last meeting, we have had seven new incidents of positive COVID-19 cases in our schools. Those seven incidents have resulted in 112 students and 15 staff members being quarantined, which means that 98% of our students remain in school, remain in instruction, and that remains our primary goal, safely keep as many students in school for as long as we can. We'll give some more updates on this later in the meeting when we cover the COVID update. But I think it's also important to know that there are other students and staff members who are quarantined, and I don't include those in this count. Those other folks are quarantined because of exposures outside of school or in community-related or, or home-related exposures, and if we were to count those, it would be an exhausting process and, and more than we could manage. So we're in charge of managing the ones that were, that have cohort impact in our school and we manage those, we manage those quarantine orders and all the communications therein, and public health manages all of the other ones. So that's it for my update, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to board reports. Lou, shall we start with you, please?
Sure. I visited with Eagle Valley Middle School last week, got to talk to the teachers and just tell them how much we appreciate them and how, how we thank them for everything they're doing. I asked them if they have any comments or concerns and overall, I would say everybody's very happy to be with the kids and pretty much everybody agreed that having Wednesdays to, to plan and for the rest of the week is totally necessary and they're also very thankful of the smaller cohorts, obviously that's something that we're going to keep hearing, how teachers want to keep that going, so everybody's enjoying having smaller groups. And today I went to Brush Creek Elementary and same thing, just happy to be at school and everybody's doing great and just the same, just enjoying the small cohorts. We are happy to have, I'm happy to have my kids at school and I'm still volunteering for recess and playing with the first graders and sometimes the older kids, they don't want to play with me, but I watch them and that's it here.
I also went on vacation, which was great. I attended Battle Mountain High School School Accountability, where we had sort of their COVID update, also an update on AP courses from Jason Spannigle, who runs that program, and one of the counselors, Kristen Carey, talked about the colleges that students who graduated last year are now attending. I also have attended the CASB preparation session for the Fall Delegate Assembly, which is on Friday, to learn how to vote and do that. And the best committee meeting, which is about school insurance, and it is definitely not the best. I wanted to give a shout out to Joanna Bott, who is moving on from the school district, but I, having been here for seven years, appreciate all your hard work and you were always the person I called in a panic when my computer didn't work and I couldn't get into something, so I'm sad to see you go, but good luck in your new endeavors.
Dr. Long?
Thank you. I just have a couple things. I did take a little vacation too. My family and I and our dog drove to Illinois to check on my mother. I haven't seen her in a couple of years, but Illinois is more locked down than we are. They're not, most of their state is not back in school, they're mostly online. Had a college visit. Also, my son is going to be graduating in about a year and a half from Battle Mountain, so we visited a Western Illinois University there. That campus as well was almost like a ghost town, there was very few students. It was a beautiful fall day when we were there. As far as being a local here, I had my first virtual parent-teacher conference last night with my daughter Tori's teacher at Berry Creek Middle School, and I, I think it was handled very well. They emailed or they mailed us the, the materials that we were going to be covering and then we just were able to cover those things in the, in the online, you know, in the, in the virtual forum. Took about 30, 25, 30 minutes and we got our questions answered and we had some good resources that we were able to share and it, it was a lot less hassle than having to go to the school really and wait around and see if someone was late or whatever, and I think it's a pretty efficient, pretty efficient way to do it. I have the similar, similar meetings tomorrow with my two sons, both who are at Battle Mountain, and my understanding is those, I think we're meeting with every single teacher. It's going to be like a two or three hour process. Is that similar for you too, Shelley?
Yeah, I mean you could, you could sign up for any teachers that you wanted to meet with, so I mean if you wanted to meet with all of your students, teachers.
Yeah, the slot seemed a lot bigger, that's what I thought, really?
It's pretty amazing, I mean it's all going to be done through Google meets and you just, in your little 10-minute slot, you go to each teacher, so I'll be curious to see how it works too, but.
Yeah, interesting. So I'm, I'm excited about that. At the college, we are putting together the spring schedule and we have a lot of different things that we need to discuss. One of the things we're going to be discussing in the next few months is our DE program and how we can interface that with high schools and their AP classes. I think there will be some big changes from CMC. Faculty hasn't been as involved in that process from the CMC side as, as many of them have liked, have wanted to be, so we're trying to find ways to incorporate that and provide more student options, more student rigor. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Since we met last, Dr. Long and I had the opportunity to do a staff meeting at Avon Elementary School, so it was really great to get over there and hear from their staff about what's going on, needs, supports, and what they're proud of. I also had the second, part two of the ECCA staff meetings with the lower school students or teachers of lower school grades. So again, great opportunity to get that direct interaction. I participated in a local diversity, equity, and inclusion effort with a number of community partners and have been meeting periodically. Our most recent meeting yesterday was great to kind of take a step back and just discuss all of the different similar initiatives going on in the community and ways to pull that work together and engaging voices that were not at the table that might be valuable. I also got to listen in to the symposiums event recently, sort of a state of Eagle County that Superintendent Qualman spoke on, along with Will Cook and Beth Howard. Jeff Schroll, it was really interesting to hear how each of their systems are, are doing and what they're prioritizing moving forward. And then I serve on the Statewide Healthy Kids Colorado Survey Advisory Group. We had a meeting this week talking about, crazy enough, the 2021 Fall Survey Administration and that tool getting finalized, and then also discussed the interim 2020 survey that some of our schools are, will participate in. I'll speak more to that later tonight. And then on a personal note, I too got to do my first virtual parent-teacher conference this week and just like Dr. Long, I was really impressed by how well it went, super smooth, great to use those virtual platforms. A highlight for me was, it was for my son who's in kindergarten and seeing his self-assessment of where he thinks he's doing well and where he thinks he can grow. Adorable, I'll save that one. And then yeah, just with my kids getting ready for Halloween and it's going to look so different for us this year, but still trying to celebrate in a way that's meaningful and until the snowstorm squeezed in some last couple of summer, summery type adventures.
I attended a staff meeting at Home State Peak. It happened to be the morning that, after I think they'd had their first COVID cases, and I will share, the principal, Guyagos, was very appreciative of, she said the district just swooned in, she felt super supported, and she was just really, really pleased with the response. And I, so I think the staff was made very comfortable. And you know, I think aside from the cohorts that were quarantined, I think it was sort of business as usual, so she was again, very appreciative. She also had, when we walked in, I guess the district website has a calming sort of room now with different videos, and she had one of the calming videos up and she's been sharing with her staff and they've apparently been very much enjoying that, and I didn't know that it existed, but again, she was very appreciative and she just went, it looked like Norway or something, like the fjord or something, and she had it up and yeah, she said she's been calming down to it and really happy. So that was a good meeting. I think in general, the same sentiment that we've been sort of hearing, which is those Wednesdays are really great, it's great to be back in school with the kiddos, I think everybody's sort of feeling, you know, more comfortable as, as the days go on and the weeks go on, that you know, that the systems are working, so that was good. I did attend my first district accountability meeting last week, so that was sort of the kickoff for the, I guess, 2020, 2021 school year, and that committee then comes to the board in March with some recommendations, so it's kind of intro to that. And what else? Oh, oh, and can't forget, last push for 5B. There is a Facebook page up, you can go to it and like it, I think it's Yes for Eagle County Schools, 5B or something, again, if you Google it, you'll find it, or if you look for it on your Facebook page, but like it, 5B, everybody, yes, hopefully probably most people have their ballots in already, but final push, so we don't want to be complacent. So that is it.
Great, thank you. Did you find in the district, where's the calming room? I think it's in the district information. There's an actual calming room and you go on the website and you click and it takes you to several different things and some meditation apps and it's a place if you feel like you need some support with peace and calmness?
Employee section.
Employee section.
I haven't gone much.
So it's.
There's links to live, live baby cams.
Live baby?
Live animal baby cams.
Live animal baby cams, stuff like that, it's a, yeah. So that brings me to me. I went to, to visit my kids who are both in Durango and I'm not sure I'd call it a vacation, but it was disenlightening, the, a little bit of everything, a lot of excellent intellectual stimulation and laughing and hearing what the young people think and then a lot of it knowing why you're not supposed to be hanging around with them because there's a lot of questionable decision-making going on, on all levels, from dog walking to dishwashing and all the way on up to the serious stuff, but it was a, it was, it was really beautiful and, and then I found a book on their table, of course, that because they had a lot of great stuff, called Burrow Genius, written by Victor Villasenor, which, inspiring, always you want to read the inspiring story, you know that it has a good ending because the book was published, but then he talked about his 265 rejections. So I'm hoping if I ever get a good book published, I'm not going to have to go through 265 rejections to get there. That's quite a, but it's a story of a young Hispanic's journey through the education system, starting in the 40s though, in California, and I had to keep stopping as I was reading the book to remind myself that this was a long time ago in California and that we're not allowed to hit students anymore. For sure that's over because he was the, on the, receiving him a lot of corporal punishment throughout his whole young elementary school life, which is very traumatic, but there was also that underlying message that he was not good enough at all times and that the Mexican kid should be somewhere else and they shouldn't come to this school. And just, you know, wanting to be optimistic, to know that's changed and to know that things have gotten so much better for all of our kids, you know, that nobody's getting taken out and smacked by their teacher anymore, but and even if we have any of that very subtle racism, that's where we're working with the, the equity, I'm hoping that we can open our hearts and minds and just to read that book and see how bad it was and then also see maybe some of the residual stuff that's still lingering across the nation. I'm not trying to single out Eagle County schools, I'm talking about across the nation and I'm sure we'd have the same story if it was written in the South by an African-American, you know, person who succeeded in despite of his education. Oh, and but the most rewarding thing was the, the young, he was brutalized by teachers over and over again, and then the substitute teacher, three days, somebody cared about him for three days, changed his life and he could remember that. So you know as, that we can make a kid's life miserable or we can make a difference in three days that will last them forever. If you can get that message that they're loved and their work matters and who they are matters and that they have a chance in the future, you don't have to be in the business forever. It can happen in, in shorter increments, so just, that was the, I wanted to leave with an inspiring message, it was very well written, but that was the inspiring message on that one. I was able to join a virtual staff meeting with Red Canyon High School, such a great staff and the work they do and they're able to take advantage of some of these COVID changes to improve their practice, and I know that's the theme across all the staff meetings, is staff working to improve their practice through this and hoping to bring the, the silver linings through when we come out on the other side. You reminded me about the meeting, CAC, I see this, I can go, I will RSVP, I have a future meeting coming up that I can report on next time. And I think that rolls me into the old and new business, which from today, I would like to get on the schedule at some point in the future, just a discussion about IEP and ALP percentages, because I think when, we have to talk about things to bring them up and that's some numbers that we need to work on, making sure we're not under identifying kids that need their services, whether they're remediation services or advancing services. We're going to talk about the staff meetings and the work session next time and during our board self-eval and we'll do some retreat planning. So I'm going to ask you all to think about what it is we want to accomplish that day. So what we've done in past retreats is get to know each other better, which is what happens when you spend a whole day together working. We've, we've had great debriefs on legal issues, all the way down to the flag, we've had, we've, you know, we can hit some really dry stuff if anybody's interested in that, but what, what is it that we want to learn that's not the dry stuff? Or what discussions do you all think would move us forward as a team? And that's what we'll, we'll lay that out next meeting, because then the next time we meet after the Thanksgiving holidays will be our retreat at Battle Mountain High School. So go ahead and send, you have something right now, let me know, and if you don't, you can send me an email.
I just had two other topics.
For the retreat?
Well, either.
Or just for old, new business?
One, is there, is definitely a lot of discussion going on right now regarding reading resources and I just wondered if we could get a full list of the reading curriculum or reading resources that are used at each of our primarily elementary schools, but I think middle would also be helpful. I know some boards have been criticized recently for not knowing that information or not being on top of that information, and I know the state has taken a look at sort of which programs they think are scientific or science-based versus, I don't know what you would be otherwise, but that there are those curriculums that they promote or are, anyway, you know what I'm trying to say. So that would be one, and then the other, and I was looking for that sheet of paper, but along the same lines, we had a spreadsheet last year that Dr. Jarno brought and it was sort of, you know, in a perfect world, we'd have these resources and it was three levels of if we had this money to spend, what we would do, and I'd like to revisit that and just look at where we are and what things have been purchased and what things we still need or have changed our mind on, or just sort of where we are on that. And then the one other thing is the seal by literacy seems to have been put on the back burner, and I know that this year's seniors were not able to do it in time to use it on their college applications, so I just wondered if we could get an update on when that would be resumed and resuming and sort of the timing on when kids would go through that process, or if that's something that is a casualty of COVID or just where we are. And that was it.
All right, we took notes on that and.
One other piece that we'll add to exec session in an upcoming meeting is preparation for the negotiations process.
All right, great, so the list gets longer, we'll have more self, school improvement plans. All right, we're getting close to the end though, I think?
Getting close. Two more meetings and we'll be done.
And then the COVID planning and accommodations, comprehensive annual financial report, looking forward to that. Review of an approval of early childhood human resource policy, which will probably be on consent, some monitoring reports, and then if we ever have any questions, what we like to learn, do we have any questions, who we want to hear from, do we need to know more about something, it's good to give the staff, the team, a heads up beforehand. Anybody have anything else they want to add? And you took, you got that all written down, so. All right, Amy? We're going to recognize National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Amy Kandorski presenting.
Though we're at the end of October, October is National Disability Employment Awareness Month, so as we were talking about special education earlier, the governor makes a proclamation each month, and I want to just remind our community and all of us that we celebrate wanting all of our kids with disabilities to have college, career, and employment opportunities. We host the CLIME program, which is our program for 18 to 21-year-old students who get that extended time and eligibility in our district. We partner with CMC, so the kids are on a college campus, and getting community experiences both in the employee, employment, college, and community readiness. So always want us to remember that community support for kids with disabilities across the ages and really welcoming that community involvement in our kids' world. So along with the governor, celebrating 30 years of the Americans with Disabilities Act and the opportunities for our kids, so those partnerships of college and career. of college and career and job awareness for even kids with most, more significant disabilities. So it's my honor to celebrate with all of you. You know about the CLIME program and can't be thankful enough for our partnership with CMC to give those kids those extra years of partnership within the district. And then a selfish plug, if you really want to know more about GT and special education, it is a DAC presentation item for next week. So Kelly, you'll probably hear all about it and get kind of firsthand, but we'll definitely share whatever you guys need to know across the school and across the district. So thank you. And you have the governor's proclamation in your packet.
Thank you. All right, thank you. And since it's a proclamation already issued by the governor, we don't need to vote on it to accept it as we do with some other resolutions. I just, looking back at my notes here, there was someone who approached me about scholarship resources, a compilation of them, or all different, I know before we've had a resource book about just different resources available in the county, and it's been published in English and Spanish. But if we had any scholarship resource information consolidated, is it available? And is it available in both languages?
Our counselors produce those every year at our high schools. So they could inquire with our high school counselors and they can show them where those are.
Talk to the high school, because she should be, she should be able to, that's what I thought. It's like, you should be able to get this information. So it's, it's there.
They have consolidated lists of those.
Alrighty, then Superintendent Qualman, we turn it over to you with COVID planning and accommodations.
Thank you. I covered some of the new incidents in, in my board report. I'll reiterate those. In the last three weeks, we've had seven new incidents of positive COVID cases in our schools. None of them were from transmission within the school. I think that's important to point out. We have yet to have any student-to-student, staff-to-student, or student-to-staff transmission. So face masks, social distancing, all the cleaning protocols that we have going on in our schools, those layers of protection are working. But we do have seven new incidents, and it's resulted in 117 students and 15 staff members being quarantined. So we'll continue to work on that. But it's, I think, great to announce that we have 98% of our kids still in school. I would like to talk a little bit more detail about the key performance indicators that we've migrated to. The, the state now has adopted a metric that has five colors. Our previous model at Eagle County had three colors. So we had to redesign our thresholds at which we make decisions about what model of instruction we provide. Our previous key performance indicator, we, we would switch to 100% remote in the red zone. We're going to maintain that same threshold to move the whole district into remote. I think what we are seeing, though, is the addition of the new orange zone has caused some question. We didn't have that in the old KPI, but now we do. In the orange zone, we would subscribe to the same philosophy that we've had since August, safely keep as many kids in school for as long as we can. But we anticipate that in orange, we are going to have a few more teachers in quarantine. We'll have a few more students in quarantine. And there's a tipping point in each school where it becomes unmanageable. If you have too many staff members that are out or too many kids that you're trying to balance with at-home remote learning and in-school learning, at, at some point, it just becomes easier to manage for everybody if you switch all the way into remote learning. So we'll consider that in the orange zone. That decision is made by me as to whether or not we're going to close down a school for, for remote learning. But I would make that in collaboration with the building principal, with public health, and with a union representative at the table as, as well. So it would be a collaborative process. I do think it's important also to mention that there's been a rumor going around about switching to remote between Thanksgiving and Christmas as, as a cautionary measure. That, that's really not congruent with, with our philosophy and our goal of trying to keep safely as many kids in school for as long as we can. We'll continue to monitor the KPI and adjust instructional modes to align with the epidemiological data. And we can consider transitioning to remote when it's, when it's necessary based on that data. One of the things that we, we have done with our return to school plan that I think has worked really well for us is we haven't set arbitrary dates at which we're going to do something, at which we're going to make a switch. We were intentional about that. We've seen so many districts around the state and around the country that set arbitrary dates that are, are disconnected from the epidemiological data. And then as the data changes and they approach that action date, what they've said is of no relevance. They have to change their plan. And that just puts the, the community on a yo-yo emotionally and logistically. People are making plans and scheduling for things that, that never happened. So I, we are, our, our goal is to remain open through that three-week period between Thanksgiving and Christmas. We will watch the data. And if we have need to close a school or two, then, then we would do that. But again, we will remain open with as many schools as we can, for as many students as we can, for as long as we can. Additionally, from my end, to report on an update with Eagle County Education Association, I, I've pointed out in a couple of venues lately that I think our success in, in keeping schools open is due in large part to our collaborative relationship with the union. I continue to meet with them monthly with Adele Wilson to share their concerns and for us to, to share our ideas on how we might resolve some of those. And we've really moved towards them being more engaged in, in district processes. For example, we have union representation in the district accountability meetings now. And we also have union representation at AD Team, Union Representation Budget Committee. So really tried to find a place and a seat and a voice for them in a lot of different venues. So with that, we'll move to a sports update from Dr. Jarno.
Sports are rolling right along. I am proud to say I was at the Battle Mountain High School game last Friday, their home game, and everyone was masked up. Everyone was behaving. It went really well. I'll be at the Eagle Valley game this Friday night as well. Our ticketing system is working really, really well. We're not actually charging. There is a, a fee to purchase the tickets. But that works exceptionally well because it helps us to make sure we're within the 175-person limit. And we could use it for contact tracing. We're even talking about using it for other events. And one of our middle schools, Berry Creek Middle School, is also using the ticketing system. So things are going really well. I think that it's tough because we didn't have the practice and the preparation that we ordinarily would, since we sort of jumped to the football season in the middle of the fall. But I'm pleased that we have, have not had any major injuries. That was a big concern of mine in moving to the A season for football, that we wouldn't have had that practice and conditioning. But I feel like that has, has turned out to be pretty well. So everything is working well in the sports world.
Thanks, Dr. Jarno. For fifth-day activity update, Melissa Riewald Thun is unable to be here tonight. But I can share that we are seeing a slow increase, not only in student participation in those activities, but in, in activities available. So on our school website, you can see all those different, different activities that we've added in the different partner groups. And again, a big thank you to all our partner groups who are making those activities available. And lastly.
Mr. Paul, may I ask?
Melissa, welcome.
I just wanted to let everyone know, one of the developments that has happened is we did find out through our providers for fifth day that CCAP funds, so that's that, the Child Care Assistance Program, that families do not need to pay a co-pay like they always have in the past. Those have been forgiven for the school year. So that applies to fifth-day programs and for any childcare needs, if they already qualify for the rest of the year if we do go into remote and after-school programming. So families have no, no co-pay with the CCAP dollars.
Got it. Excellent. Good news. All right, thank you. So we'll.
Great news. Thanks for being tuned in, Melissa.
So with that, we'll move to Adele Wilson, Director of HR. Adele, can you tell us about how efforts are going to secure more substitutes, bus drivers?
Food service?
Take it away.
Food service?
Food service.
So we'll start with the lower and go to the yay. Bus drivers, we are still in need. We had had a few applicants, but unfortunately, things did not pan out with the application process. So we are still, in order to really be fully staffed and have some, allow routes, allow trips, et cetera, et cetera, we need about seven to nine more drivers. We have implemented a bonus system. And we're working on submitting advertising to Vail Daily and write on our Facebook page with some additional boosts with that, that you can pay to get that out to more people than just our Facebook followers. Then cooks, I believe that we said at our last meeting that we have increased the hourly rate for cooks. If we did not, we have done that. And we've increased that for all employees by $2.67 an hour. That makes us more competitive with like Wendy's as an example. And great news, we did hire two new cooks and they were in orientation today. One of my team members, Brenda, does a Spanish orientation for, for some of our employees. To be fully staffed, we do need a couple more cooks and a float manager. And I have in my queue a float manager to actually offer a job too. So I'm working on that today. And then our really great news is with our guest teachers, we've been working in conjunction with the communications team and also with Vail Health and Vail Valley Partnership and Youth Power 365. And those folks have been able to assist us with some of the costs of actually becoming a guest teacher. You're having your fingerprints taken care of, getting your substitute authorization. So they will reimburse up to 96 candidates for those costs. So the communications team put an article in the Trail Marker that went out yesterday, I believe, and that hits about 10,000 people between staff and parents, which is a great marketing tool. And then here, Dan and his team are working to do a press release to say thank you to our partners. And then we did run 10 new guest teachers through training last Monday, the 19th, and we have 19 in the hiring pool. So, which is like fantastic.
Thank you for that. And we'll continue to work on that. I think those hiring incentives are helping out for sure. So, well done.
That's it for that one.
So next on the agenda is an update on the final October count.
Yes.
And I'm on the agenda for that as well. So I've been keeping you updated on this for the last several weeks. And our final October count is seven students under projection. That's seven. Seven. That's within 1/10th of 1% of our projections, probably the closest that we've been in a long time. I think that's due to several factors. I think, first of all, we were conservative in, in our projections and worked closely with our principals to make sure that they understood what we were anticipating this year. And I think, secondly, our schools, including our teachers and our principals, have really been incredibly flexible in the service that they're able to provide families to accommodate a lot of different requests with blended at-home support, in-school learning, remote access from home. So they're really bending over backwards to, to make sure that, that kids stay enrolled in the district and that they're provided services from the school district. I think of interesting, an interesting note to add is that we did see more mobility this year. It's probably not surprising. We saw higher numbers of students coming into the district and higher numbers of students going out of the district as compared to last year. And last year was the first year that the board asked me to examine those numbers. And this year, we had a slight increase. So as an example, in 1920, we had 400 students enroll into the district new to us. And this year, we had 427 new to the district enroll with us. And last year, we had 376 students leave the district. And this year, we had 442 students leave the district. So increased mobility, not surprising in this environment with, with the economy like it is and housing challenges that we have in our community. But I got to say, I'm excited to know that we are within, within that, that 1% for enrollment. That means that this will have little to no implication on our budget for the school year. Questions on that?
It's always nice to have one less thing to worry about.
Yeah.
All right. So Michelle is going to present us with the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey data.
All right. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here from a slightly different viewpoint than usual. Michelle Stecker, I serve as Executive Director for Mountain Youth, but I'm not volunteering with the school board here, and appreciate an opportunity to share some of our results from the most recent administration. Hard to believe, it was almost a year ago, November of 2019. As a little bit of background, this is the largest local youth behavioral assessment. And we've been conducting it with Mountain Youth in partnership with the school district. This is our seventh administration in the past 15 years and was really a huge foundation for why Mountain Youth came to exist in the first place, to make sure the community had a current, honest look at youth needs, strengths, and behaviors. We surveyed almost 4,000 students, grade six through 12. This was the first year that sixth graders were included. And that was super helpful for us because otherwise, it's an every-other-year survey. And our middle school data would be really hard to compare administration to administration if we had 100% student turnover at the middle, at each particular middle school. Of note, we are the only community in the state of Colorado that has had 100% of our middle and high schools opt in to the survey. So many communities, it's maybe one or two of the schools that participate. And only because they're asked to, to be part of the state survey, we're an opt-in community. So our schools, our district, our community has found enough value in this data that we commit to participating. And we are, I said, 100% of the middle and high schools. That includes our, our partners that are not district schools, which is extremely unique for a community to be able to really have that reflective data of the whole community. I'll mention, too, that beyond the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey, the school district also administers the Gallup Poll and Student Perception Survey. And so together, looking at a couple of those different assessments really helps the district better understand where students are at and how we can best support them with services. And the data is used in a number of different ways. It's really helpful at the building level and then community level to understand where students are at so we can prioritize resources. This data is also incredibly valuable for nonprofits and other partners in the community to raise funds by being able to prove the need for different services. So I put together kind of a highlights reel of a few areas. I want you to know that at the high school level, there's almost 200 questions asked, and at the middle school level, close to 100. And so this really is just kind of those, a couple of key highlights that we pulled out. And the full reports are available on the Mountain Youth website, mountainyouth.org, in our work section. I also want to give a shout out to Phil and the whole district for enabling the community to have access to the aggregate-level data. There are many districts throughout the state. So at the end of the day, the schools and the districts own the data. And there are many communities where they own that privately. And for us to be willing to share the aggregate level, so the combined data from all of the schools, is so helpful in many of the mechanisms that I just shared. And as we walk through some of these areas, I'm going to also point out how we're comparing to some of our regional partners, so neighboring communities as well as statewide. So first, we're going to take a look at substance use areas. And what we've noticed with high schoolers and middle schoolers alike is that we saw pretty consistent substance use across most of the substance areas. For many years, 2017, we saw a bit of an increase in much of the use, and then back down in 2019. So a little something to celebrate in that we're back down to kind of where we had seen historically. So here you can see high school use for a number of different substance areas, alcohol, binge drinking, which is drinking five or more drinks in a short period of time with the intention of getting, being under the influence, marijuana use, and prescription meds. We are at comparable rates to our regional and statewide partners, slightly above where our counterparts are in binge drinking and pretty much smack dab where our counterparts are in the other areas, or doing slightly better. better. And one other area I want to note on high school substance use is our impaired driving. We did see almost a double the reported use in marijuana impaired driving by student As I mentioned, at the middle school level, we saw similar increase in 2017 and then decrease close to where we were for years prior in this last administration. Our local middle school students are using marijuana, about half the rate of our statewide counterparts. So something to celebrate there. Moving us along into some of the mental health areas that we take a look at, this question that we look at here is the number one indicator for depression. So the question reads, have you felt so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more, in that you stopped doing some usual activities? So your behavior changed. And as we know through conversations with our school partners and with young people directly, we need to keep prioritizing their mental health and their wellness. So we did see a pretty big increase in this area. We are at about the same place as our statewide and regional counterparts. And then looking more specifically at suicide attempts, we were happy to see that we have seen decrease in both middle school and high school attempts. However, we really believe that any number is a bad number here. We don't want to see any young person reporting that they've attempted suicide in the past year. We did see 15% of students reporting that they considered suicide, about 14% making a plan, and then, as you can see here, the actual reported students who've said they have attempted suicide. Got to give a shout out here to the great work of our partners at Speak Up Reach Out and the Hope Center and Mind Springs, as well as our school-based clinicians for often being that frontline, that first point of contact with students in crisis. Moving into some of the positive areas, and I purposefully went from what's not looking so great to what we have to celebrate. We use this term protective factors and assets interchangeably when we talk about what's going well for our students and what can help set them up for success or help create resiliency. Trusted adults is one of the primary factors when we look across the community. And so this could be a student going to either a parent, a coach, a teacher, a pastor, any adult that might have a positive influence and has a strong enough relationship with that young person that they would go to them if they were needing support or afraid for themselves or a friend. And there's some great programming that's happening in our classrooms, particularly at the middle school level, with instigating these conversations with students, who is that for you? You might not need them right now, but let's identify one or two people who that could be for you so that you have them at the ready when you might need them. And research shows that having one or more caring adults in a child's life increases likelihood that they will flourish and become productive adults themselves. That's reported by Child Trends. So our, again, our rates continue to be really high in number of students that say they have this type of trusted adult in their life. You can see about 3/4 of students at the high school and middle school level say they have that person, they know who it is, they're ready to talk to them. And another big protective factor in our community is engagement and pro-social opportunities. So I've showed a couple of pieces here. First, at the top, we see engagement in volunteerism and community service. We've got about half of our high school students reporting that they're involved in those activities. And then, secondly, we've got engagement in extracurriculars. And this can be clubs, sports, or any other activity that they're involved with as a productive use of their time. And so even though we saw a little bit of a drop at the middle school level, we're still really proud of how we're looking with students engaging. One interesting piece in the prevention field is often if something's going well, it stops getting the attention. It stops getting the funding, it stops getting the support. And so just like to remind folks that in this realm, these assets are strong, and we need to keep focusing on building those relationships and building those opportunities for all students in order to help support them. I pulled in a couple of slides specific to academic engagement and relevance, which I haven't spoken to other partners or groups about yet, but there were some really interesting pieces here. So looking at number of students that think their classes are interesting and stimulating, we had about 3/4 of our students report, yeah, I'm interested in what I'm learning about. I think the things that they are learning in school are going to be important later in life. We saw a little bit less of the amount of students reporting that that's the case. And so for me, thinking through that, you know, if there's half of our students this past year that said they see a connection between what they're learning now and later in life, I really appreciated hearing Dr. Giorno's presentation earlier about CareerX and other customized pathways for students. And we're really focused on building those opportunities and excited to hopefully see that number rise in the future. And then trying to do their best work at school, we did see an uptick there this past go-around, with about 3/4 of students say they consistently are trying their best. School climate, do you enjoy being in school or not? I was surprised here that we didn't see higher marks. The blue line here is number of students who say they almost always or always hated being in school. And then the orange line is often enjoyed or always enjoyed being in school. So it was really disappointing to see the blue line higher than the orange line. I compressed the percentages so that we can see where we moved from 2017 to 19. This was a new question in 2017, so we don't have a ton of history on where we've been in the past, but an area that we can definitely look to improve. So just looking back, a couple of the key highlights, again, we saw many of the substance use areas increase, so negative movement in 2017, and then coming back down in 2019. We continue to focus on mental health supports as a concern for students in our community and everybody in our community. Some of those strong protective factors or assets that we need to keep putting attention towards are around trusted adults and pro-social involvement. And then we kind of have a mixed bag with how students are reporting academic relevance and engagement. So that sums up what we recognized in 2019. Again, there is loads more data, and I would be happy to pull anything that anybody would like to see. Again, the reports are available on Mountain Youth's website as well. Often when I give a presentation like this, the question comes of, well, this is great, but this was a year ago, and quite a lot has happened since November of 2019. Where are we at? So while this is typically an every-other-year project, the state did put together a condensed option this year, so 2020, which is typically an in-between year, a non-survey year. And locally, schools had the option to opt into that one if they wanted to gather some more data on where their students were at. It's only about 50 questions long, same questions at the middle school and high school level. Of those, about half the questions are the same as the typical Healthy Kids, so we can see where movements happened in the past year, and half of them are new and more specific to COVID and stress and coping. Here locally, I was very pleased that Battle Mountain High School took advantage of participating, and the participation window for the state goes through the next week or so. We also had Eagle County Charter Academy and Vail Mountain School participate. We may have others, but I know at least those three are partaking. So very curious to see what comes of their results. Questions, feedback, comments? It's really fun to be a data presentation at the end of our full agenda tonight.
This data does make up the lion's share of our holistic indicators, so it's quite valuable to the district to know where our resources need to go. You did mention earlier in the presentation that Gallup and the Student Perception Survey have also been part of our holistic indicators, and this year, we're seeing overlap in what those two survey. So we're asking principals if they want to continue to do both, or is there one that they would prefer to do. Just trying to find a way to lighten up the load on our teachers and students right now, but still get relevant data. So we are finding most of them still prefer one over the other, and we'll be able to share more about that later on this fall. Thank you for these numbers. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And again, just want to express our gratitude for the district. This is a big time commitment to give entire period across an entire school. In many other parts of the state where, like I mentioned, maybe one or two schools in a district participate, it's typically a small sample of students. We've just realized that this well-oiled machine runs best to have the full school participate, and it really does help boost our confidence when we can say that this data reflects where the whole community is at. So thank you so much for being an amazing partner throughout the years, and also thank you for being willing to have that aggregate report available for the whole community to utilize. It really means a lot in boosting supports and resources for students and families.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. The full report is easy to access on the website, so if you want to look into it more, there's plenty. There is a five-year Cisco telecommunications contract, and I see Dr. Giorno coming up to the plate. So we're gonna stick with our baseball metaphors, I guess.
So essentially, this is the contract that, the systems that allow all of our phones to actually work. So I'm here with my technology hat on instead of my curriculum hat that I wore earlier. So we own the hardware of all our phones, but this contract with Cisco provides all of the services that go with those phones. It is a locked-in rate for five years. We pay it annually. Over the course of five years, the total is $232,000. It's $46,000 per year, roughly. And again, it just provides all of the services that make our phones work. If we don't have this side of the contract, then we basically just have some hardware that doesn't do anything. And Jason Butters did a great job in negotiating this with Cisco to get us on a plan that keeps the rates steady year by year and is a little bit less expensive than the plan that we were on previously. So we're just asking for you to approve us to move forward with the contract.
Dr. Giorno, we don't have a copy of the contract in the board notes at this time. When is that contract due?
It is due by the end of November, so I could provide that for the next-
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought that was included on there. That would be my fault. I apologize.
Yeah, we can get that added in and move it to November, if that gives you enough time still to get it.
Yes, it does.
Should we not approve then until we see the contract?
Okay. Yeah, it needs to be on here so we can have all reviewed it.
Okay, we'll look at it next time.
Right, as long as we have plenty of time, otherwise we couldn't get a copy.
We have time.
We have went fast through some of our presentations.
We have time. We can do it at the next meeting, which will be on the 11th.
Yes, you've got a calendar right here. We have-
It's my birthday, so I won't be here next time, but I'm sure I can have Jason come and answer any questions that need to be answered.
Delegate that to somebody, sure.
It is Veterans Day, yes. Okay, thank you. I apologize. Didn't realize it wasn't in there.
So here we are, if I am not jumping ahead, as I have done, to the end of the meeting. Evaluating the meeting in terms of governance policies and advancing the goals and mission of the district. Anybody have any comments on these evaluation?
I'd say it was a real gift to be able to see some videos of students at schools and in classrooms and what their highlights are of learning so far this year. That was a real strong point of the meeting for me today.
I was going to say too, I think that we, it's not quite time to pat ourselves on the back, but I think certainly a round of applause should go to Phil and the district leadership team in the planning process. It's not, no one wants to see an incident happen at a school, but within hours of learning about the incident, the fact that parents can be contacted and staff can be notified, teachers can be notified, everyone knows what's happening, how long it's going to happen for, that those things don't happen on their own. They happen through very careful and methodical planning. And I think that's what the community expects of us. They expect us to plan. They expect us to think of every contingency, and then they expect us to be consistent with the implementation of those plans. And while we can look at other communities and say, this community, they didn't do it right, you know, they're scrambling there at the last minute, that's exactly what can't happen in a community. You can't look to your school board and your leadership team and say, why didn't you guys think about this? You should have planned for this. I don't hear anyone complaining about that, and I know it's because of the good thorough work that was done months ago in making up these plans and then consistently following the plans. When something needs to be changed, we weren't afraid to say that we need to make a change, especially with the changing of the tracker. But I want to say thank you to everyone on the leadership team and Phil, and just say, I think at this point, job well done in making the plans, following the plans, and communicating the plans to everyone. It's really what I think is expected of us, and I'm very grateful that we were able to do that, but mostly you doing the hard work. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Dr. Long. I think it's important to recognize that everybody's been at the table for this planning, parents, teachers, principals, the district leadership team. The board's been informed the whole time and collecting your input. So what I've told everybody that asks is it's been collaboration and relationships that got us to this point, and we got to keep those in mind and help us get through these hard times. But thank you for the acknowledgement.
Yeah, I'll echo that too, and then to the families that are just rolling with it as well, you know? And the teachers who are working extra and our leadership team really continue to be impressed and proud that we're on the forefront of this. And I've only been hearing words of gratitude for having kids back in school. And I know that some people have struggled, and it's not working out for them, and there's, it's definitely, in any situation, 100% satisfaction isn't going to happen, especially with the pandemic. It's tricky. And so we appreciate those people who've had to make sacrifices or had to make changes, and, you know, we hope that they can come back and be part of our team in the future, or we know that they're wasting the best of luck, and just going to continue to do the best we can. And I'm glad to hear so many people got some time to rest here in October, and soon it'll be Thanksgiving. Anyone else? I feel like we're missing something here, dressed because it's only 7:30, but I don't think anyone's going to complain if I pick this up now and say, meeting adjourned? See you next month.